Craven County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Howard.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Present.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Booker.
Here. If you would all join me, we're going to stand and hear the county attorney read the prayer, and then after that, we will do the pledge.
Gracious God, bless the leaders of our county. Watch over our county now and in the days to come. Grant our commissioners and all representatives of Craven County wisdom, integrity, and courage in the exercise of their duties. Give them quiet spirits and steadfast hearts as they seek to provide for the needs of our people. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you all tonight, and if you would, everybody check your phone and make sure it's on silent, so we don't have a interruption of our meeting. Commissioners, you have in front of you the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions, deletions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as written. You call the roll, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. At this time, I would like to take chairman's privilege to honor our recently lost, we lost our Commissioner Mark, who sat right here, and we are going to now, got to do three things. The first thing we're going to do is, we're going to read a resolution, and Mr. County Manager, are you ready to read that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for the opportunity. Resolution recognizing Commissioner Thomas F. Mark, whereas originally from New York State, Commissioner Thomas F. Mark has lived in Craven County since 2000 with his wife, Lorraine. Whereas Commissioner Mark was sworn in by Mayor Chuck Tyson of the town of Trent Woods on December 6, 2010, to begin his first term as a Craven County Commissioner. He served in that role for seventeen years until his death on September 3, 2025. Whereas Commissioner Mark was trusted by his fellow commissioners and appointed to serve in leadership roles on the Board of Commissioners, where he diligently served as vice chairman for two terms, from December 2013 to December 2014, and December 2018 to December of 2019, and as chairman for four terms, from December of 2013 to December of 2014, from December 2016 to December of 2017, December of 2017 to December 2018, and finally, December 2019 to December 2020. Whereas Commissioner Mark represented the citizens of Craven County since 2010, representing District 1, which encompasses much of the northern portions of Craven County, including Fairfield Harbor, Bridgeton, and Vanceboro. Whereas Commissioner Mark served on numerous boards and committees, including the Carolina East Regional Health System Board, the Tourism Development Authority Board, the Highway 70 Corridor Commission, the Vanceboro Library Board, the Highway 17 Association, the Kellenberger Foundation Board, and the Dix Crisis Center Board. And whereas Commissioner Mark was instrumental in the success of several projects throughout the county, some of which include the establishment of an opioid response effort, the Riverfront Convention Center renovations, construction of the county's first and newest water plant, and the Highway 70 and 17 improvement advocacy, which we all knew so much about from his work there. And whereas Commissioner Mark helped lead recovery and resiliency projects following Hurricanes Irene, Matthew, and Florence, including the implementation of a stream debris removal program. And whereas Commissioner Mark demonstrated throughout his service a commitment to the welfare of the people of Craven County and to sound and responsible governance. Now therefore, the Craven County Board of Commissioners recognizes Thomas F. Mark for his great love for his family and his dedicated service to the citizens of Craven County, and declares that he will be greatly missed, adopted this day, the 6th of October, 2025.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. County Manager, and now we will have a slideshow with, you can watch it right there, or you can turn around and look behind you, but I think you can see it best right there. Could we click the lights down? Would that be possible? There we go, that's good. Commissioners, if you would join me down front, we're going to make one more presentation and take a photo. This is a plaque that says, "For his dedicated service as Commissioner, Craven County Board of Commissioners, December 6, 2010 to September 3, 2025." It's a long time, fifteen years, so we certainly appreciate it, and we are greatly going to miss him. So I want to present this to you and take a look back there recently. Move right in here, close ladies. Hey, we'll take a picture of this also while she looks. Item number one is the Second Public Hearing for Community Development Block Grant, and we have Kate Fersinger.
Yes.
How'd I do on that?
Yeah, great.
Very good.
A-plus.
Housing Resiliency Consultant from Insight Consulting Group, Kate?
Yes.
It's all yours.
Hi, everyone.
Good, how are you?
Thanks for having me. Good. So the Second Public Hearing is for the Community Development Block Grant Program's application that is due to the state at the end of this month, and so we're going to go through a PowerPoint with the houses that were selected to move forward in the application. Next slide, please. So we selected five units, we had five units to move forward with an application, and then one alternate unit, so six total units. We had twenty-seven applications that we reviewed, and how we review these applications is we do an income and needs assessment, and then we meet with the housing selection committee, which we met last Thursday. That selection committee consisted of Chad and Jason and Donnie from the planning department, as well as Commissioner Smith, and we move forward with the selection of these six units that I'm about to go through. So Unit 1 is 660 Mall Swamp Road. As you can see, this would be a complete reconstruction. We have a housing rehab specialist that deemed this a reconstruction based on the cost estimate and the state of the home, and the condition of the home. So as you can see, 660 Mall Swamp Road, Unit 1, has some foundation that is not supporting the unit any longer. You can see that the exterior walls are cracking, meaning it's not weather tight, and so the unit is unable to be heated up to seventy degrees Fahrenheit. You can go to the next slide. The floors are buckling in, in this unit, and the roof is also not structurally sound either. You could see that there are some large holes and some cracks in the ceiling of this unit. So we move forward with this unit and 660 Mall Swamp Road. Next slide, please. Our next unit is another reconstruction. This would be, a reconstruction means that we'll completely demolition, the house would be a demolition, and then rebuilt. We do have one rehab with our application, but right now, we're talking about these reconstructions, so this will be demolished. You could see, again, that the foundation for this unit on 909 Vale Street is starting to cave in, the floors are buckling and are severely unlevel, and our housing rehab specialist was noting while walking, it couldn't handle the stress of somebody walking on the floor. Also, you could see that the foundation has started to crack on the exterior walls. Again, you can go to the next slide. This unit is unable to heat up to seventy degrees Fahrenheit, and per HUD standards, a unit unable to heat up to seventy degrees Fahrenheit is deemed unsafe. So this unit would need new heating systems, and again, the foundation is cracking, and you could see that the windows need to be repaired, and again, the ceiling has started to cave in as well. So this would be a reconstruction, Unit 2. Next slide, please. Our third unit is 175 Fisher Town Road. As you could see, this unit would also be a complete reconstruction, a demolition and reconstruction. This is because the foundation in the unit was deemed unsafe. There are, as you could see, some large holes and cracks in the walls, and again, the floor is buckling and is unlevel and is unsafe for the resident. You can move on to the next slide. And the roof will need to be replaced as well. There's been some leakage after storms, and the window casings are not sealed, so the unit, again, is no longer able to heat up to seventy degrees Fahrenheit. So this would be a demolition and a reconstruction. Next slide, please. And then our one rehab unit we have is at 712 William Street. This unit, the electrical wiring system would need to be replaced, so the electrical outlets are no longer working in this unit, and then again, the foundation has seemed to become unstable over the years, and you could see the floor is beginning to buckle and is caving in. Next slide. Again, the foundation for this unit is a little wonky, so the walls are starting to bulge and lean in together, the doors are off the hinges and unable to be shut, and the heating system is not able to heat up to seventy degrees Fahrenheit for this unit. So this unit was deemed a rehabilitation because the foundation was structurally sound enough to complete that rehab work without having to do a complete demolition and reconstruction. Next slide, please. And then our fourth unit is 155 David Albania Court. This was deemed a demolition and complete reconstruction. This is because this is a modular unit, and so we can't rehab a modular unit with CDBG funds, and this would be a reconstruction. You could see that the foundation is not as stable, the floors are beginning to buckle in and are very unlevel, and the resident in this unit is in a wheelchair, and so it is not safe for her to move around, and the unit, again, you can go to the next slide, is unable to heat up to seventy degrees Fahrenheit because of some cracks and holes in the walls and in the windows. Next slide. And then our alternate unit would be a complete rehabilitation, not a reconstruction. This is if we have a unit fall through or some additional money, we'll move forward with the alternate unit. This alternate unit would be, as you could see, the heating system is non-existent in this unit, so we would replace the heating, and the windows need to be replaced as well. Next slide. And you could see some damage to the roof, and the stairs leading up to the unit are unsecure for the resident, and our rehab construction specialist noted that the floor was unable to handle stress in a way that a secure, stable floor would. And that is, those are the five units we'd like to move forward with, and then one alternate. So does anybody have any questions?
Question from the board. One question. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
No, you go ahead. I'm going to make a motion.
The total amount of money, what is that?
Oh, I forgot, that's so important. Nine hundred fifty thousand dollars is the amount of the grant that we would be applying for.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
For the total demolitions?
Mm-hmm.
What is the plan for the people? I mean, where did, I mean, probably I should know this, but I don't know where they, how they house them.
Great question. We have relocation funds also available within the grant, so we relocate the residents that would be having, and sometimes we have a rehab that needs to be relocated as well. So we'll relocate those for reconstructions and potentially that rehab if it's needed.
Okay. So we get them temporary housing?
Yes.
While the work is being done?
Yes. And we'll find the housing for them and work with them to make sure it's meeting their needs, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do we need a motion on this, or are we just receiving the information?
It's just a public hearing.
That's right. You get, this is just a hearing.
We'll come back to that.
So.
I would like to say something, if I may.
I'm sorry?
May I say something?
You may.
Thank you. I'd like to note that these properties, most of them have a New Bern address, but they're not within the city of New Bern. We've looked all over the county, and some of these, like James said, are out of score starts of New Bern, but they're not in a city of New Bern. I want you to make, be aware of that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Smith, and I also wanted to note, I forgot to include that to be eligible for the program for CDBG, you must be a homeowner, and you must be of low or moderate income.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you will allow, I'll make the motion that we would go into public hearing for the Community Development Block.
Okay. Public hearing?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is open. Anyone care to speak?
No one has signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number two on our agenda, Commissioners, is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Do we have anyone, Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, we do. Mr. David French.
Okay. French, you have three minutes to speak. Would you please give your name and address to start?
I'm David French, 104 Johnson Street, New Bern, and I would just like to commend the Rees Across America and the DAR for all that they have done over the years. The Rees Across America, at Cedar Grove, I participated in that last year, and I think it really was a good community building thing to honor our veterans. Another point I would like to make is that, some of you may not know or not, but Fireman First Class Edward Daniel Bowden, who was born in Riverdale, Craven County, in 1912, and he died at Pearl Harbor on the USS California, December 7, 1941. Earlier this year, his remains were identified through mitochondrial DNA, and his family, they have chosen for him to be interred at Arlington National Cemetery on October 8 of this year, and I just wanted to acknowledge him. His name is on our World War I and World War II monument out here, but it's, you know, he's a distant cousin of mine, but in Craven County, we're all cousins. That's the reason my grandmother said, "Don't talk about anyone when you go to town on Saturday." But he was the son of Hillary Thomas Bowden and Mary Alice Ball, and I would just like to, for him to be acknowledged, because the funeral will not be here, but he will be in Arlington, and that the Family History Society of Eastern North Carolina, we will place a wreath at his parents' grave in his memory on the Rees Across America this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one else sign up.
Okay. Commissioners, item number three is the consent agenda. It consists of the minutes of the September 15 regular session, tax releases and refunds, and the Convention Center additional contractual employee funding budget amendment. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Item number four, Rees Across America presentation. Stephen Astor.
Good evening, Board. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Mr. Kevin Yates, who is the location coordinator for this area for Rees Across America. He is going to be leading the charge in the wreath laying ceremony at the New Bern National Cemetery in December. That event honors our veterans with deep respect and remembrance, and Mr. Yates, I would like to give you his presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Mr. Yates, welcome.
Like Mr. Astor said, my name is Kevin Yates. I am the location coordinator for Rees Across America at the New Bern National Cemetery. I got involved with this organization in 2014, and I know many of you are familiar with it, but Stephen and I agreed that we thought it was worthwhile for me to come out here. I've held the position of the location coordinator since 2018, strictly a volunteer organization at the local level, and everything that we do is all volunteer community efforts that we bring forth. Next slide, please. This year, 4,000 cemeteries will participate. There are four here in Craven County, New Bern National, Cedar Grove, Evergreen, and Greenwood will all participate. New Bern National is the main effort, obviously, because it is the national cemetery. It is our 16th year to participate. It began in 2010 with a dozen volunteers placing a dozen wreaths on the over 6,700 headstones that were out there. Through the years, like I said, in 2014, my wife and I, who's also a veteran, became involved, and we felt that it was not getting the attention and the effort that it deserved, and so we got involved and started bringing social media and a lot of outward effort to bring in more attention to the program. And in 2018, if we think back, was the year of Florence and all that was going on. We were in a government shutdown, just as we are this year, and all the chaos and everything that was happening at this exact same time of year was the first year that we placed a wreath on every single headstone in the New Bern National Cemetery. We've done that three times. We did it in 2018, 2023, and 2024. We have 6,775 headstones out there. It was built February 1, or dedicated February 1, 1867, just after the Civil War, when efforts were made to bring all of our soldiers that had been buried in the battlefields all over Eastern North Carolina into one place and bury them where the Army of Massachusetts had been bivouacked, and so that is where the national cemetery is today. There's over 8,000 unknowns buried there, and that is one of our biggest challenges that we face with the fact that we have 1,000 unknowns there. As the bodies were reinterred in the national cemetery, you know, obviously, back at that time, they made efforts, but they were not able to identify those. We have several mass graves that go all the way up to World War II, also at the national cemetery. Next slide, please. Every wreath has to be sponsored, right? So wreaths cost seventeen dollars. That is a live balsam wreath that is brought in from Columbia Falls, Maine. Like I said, the age of the cemetery, the disconnect between the folks that live in Craven County and Eastern North Carolina today, and those that are interred at the national cemetery. A lot of our military folks, like myself, are transplants to the area, and we don't have that direct connection to a person that is interred there. And then also, like I said, 15% of the veterans that are buried in the national cemetery are unknowns. Next slide, please. If you haven't participated, this is what it looks like, right? So we have a lot of folks that come out from all different backgrounds. We have veterans, we have locals, we have just patriots that want to come out. We have folks that were just walking down the street and say, "Hey, I saw the crowd, and I wanted to come see what was going on." We have folks that just come out from different organizations, like the DAR and our SAR and all kinds of other organizations that want to come out and help us. This gentleman here that plays the bugle, he comes from Greenville every year and drives down just to play taps for us. Next slide, please. But there's so much more than just wreaths, right? That's the effort. We come out and we place wreaths. It helps with giving back to the families, helping teach our next generation the sacrifices that have been made for us to enjoy the liberty and freedoms that we have today. Next slide, please. So I mentioned in 2018, we wanted to bring more attention to the program. One of the ways that we did that was doing a truck escort. So the trucks come in from Columbia Falls, Maine, and we reached out to the Craven County Sheriff's Office, New Bern PD, and New Bern Fire, and we wanted to put together a escort. The sheriff and the chief deputy were phenomenal, said absolutely, let us know what time to get there. We put it out on social media, we had a bunch of motorcycles show up, and we brought the trucks in. Next slide, please. We come down now, it's grown each year. Now we come down Broad Street, the New Bern Fire puts the flag out over Broad Street, and we bring the wreaths in, and we give them all the proper respects that represent the 6,775 veterans that are buried in the New Bern National Cemetery, but then also, like I said, the ones that are at Cedar Grove, Evergreen, and Greenwood as well. Next slide, please. This past year, we actually added a little bit more. E&amp;J came out and set up their flag out over the 43 bypass there, and then also, one of the years, we set up at the mall parking lot just because of logistics and different things, and so again, we have tons of community support to be able to pull this off. Next slide, please. Real quick picture, because I know I'm on time. Stephen promised if I finished under 10 minutes, he would take me to simply natural. So this was the first year that we did the truck escorts, and this is Red Classic. If you don't know, Red Classic is the transportation piece of Coca-Cola, and Coca-Cola donated their truck and driver to bring the wreaths, and that was their truck and driver to bring the wreaths, and that was in 2017. Pepsi found out about it in 2018, and Pepsi has delivered our wreaths ever since. So true facts. Next slide, please. This is what the ceremony looks like. So last year, we had over 1,000 volunteers that came out, and we come to the cemetery. We have a brief ceremony. Last year, Dr. Greg Murphy was our guest speaker. He spoke briefly about the efforts that he's making nationally to, you know, bring awareness to the program and different efforts to support veterans. And then we have tons of folks that come out. Obviously, in 1867, parking wasn't a big concern, and so we arranged buses and different transportation options for folks to be able to get to the cemetery and leave afterwards in an orderly fashion. Next slide, please. We have tons of veterans and active duty members that come from Cherry Point and even Seymour Johnson to come out and help us place wreaths and honor those that are interred at the National Cemetery. Next slide. So this is kind of what it looks like. We go from a cemetery that, you know, obviously, the grass is dormant and not a whole lot of activity going on, and within minutes, we have blanketed the entire cemetery with these beautiful live balsam wreaths, and it happens in a matter of minutes. For those that have been there, we finish the ceremony, we allow family members to go place wreaths on their loved ones first, and then we kind of just let everybody go. And often, by the time I'm done saying hello to the folks, I turn around and it's done. It's amazing how quickly it happens. Next slide, please. Again, more photos of placing wreaths. Next slide. Even during COVID, when we were only allowed to have 50 people in the cemetery at a time, we were able to place all wreaths on the headstones. Next slide. And that was COVID also. We weren't allowed to have a big ceremony, but Cherry Point still sent their autograph down, and we gave them the due respect. Next slide. Again, one of our unknowns. Again, we have over 1,000 of them in the National Cemetery. Next slide. Next slide. The other thing that we've added is retiring the wreaths. And so obviously, we go out there and we take over the National Cemetery for a day and place all of these wreaths out on the headstones there, and then we go back a month later and we retire the wreaths, and we return the cemetery to the exact same condition it was in before we ever arrived. And so we started asking volunteers to come out and help us with that, and that has become just as popular as placing the wreaths. So we get scouting groups, youth groups, all types of veterans and organizations that want to come out and help us retire the wreaths. That will happen this year on Saturday, January 17th at 9:00 a.m., and that's a rain or shine event, because the National Cemetery is very strict about when the wreaths have to be removed, so that happens regardless. Next slide, please. So the unfortunate truth is, what do we do with all the wreaths, right? Unfortunately, many of them will end up in the landfill, and that is an unfortunate fact of, it's just the sheer number of wreaths that we have. We do donate many of them to different farms that feed them to their goats and livestock, but that's usually under 500 of the wreaths. And so when you add Cedar Grove, Evergreen, and Greenwood together, it's well over 7,000 wreaths that we have to dispose of on a single day. And so it's just a sheer number of wreaths that we have to do. So we have dumpsters that are brought in, and the wreaths are placed in the dumpsters, and they, unfortunately, the ones that are not taken to the farms do end up in the landfill. But again, this has become just as popular as placing the wreaths when the folks come out and help us clean up the cemetery. We also pick up any debris that's out there, limbs, trees that have fallen, anything like that. We do all that service work and place them in there and then clean up the cemetery, and we leave it, and it's like we were never even there. Next slide, please. Again, great opportunity for youth group. This is the young Marines here that came out and helped us. Next slide, please. Why am I here? All right, so this picture shows you just an example of how the wreaths show up in New Bern. They come in on these trucks. There's 12 wreaths per box. Add up 7,000 wreaths, 12 wreaths per box. It's over 600 boxes that we have to get rid of. When we started out and we were only placing a few hundred wreaths, it was easy for us to take those boxes. We would break them down, take them to the convenience center in our personal vehicles and recycle them. Over time, it became more and more challenging to take 600 boxes over to the convenience center. That's how I met Stephen. And so last year, he was phenomenal, and he actually brought us a dumpster to the cemetery. And so that way, we were able to break down the boxes and immediately place them in the dumpster, and the dumpster went away and the boxes were recycled. To continue that effort, we thought it would be a good idea that I come and speak to you tonight to make sure that funds are available to pay for that dumpster and make sure that that happens. Also, I will be asking the sheriff and the chief deputy to help us with our escort as well. Next slide, please. So again, I would like, if you haven't participated, I would personally invite you to come out and participate in Rees Across America. It will be on Saturday, December 13th. It is the same day as the Havelock Christmas Parade. It is every single year. But it's a great opportunity to come out, to remember our veterans, to give back to their families, and remind them that their service and sacrifice has not been forgotten. Are there any questions?
Okay, before we take questions, Stephen, well, the funds are available, so let's make sure we get that dumpster out there again.
Yes, sir. Will do. Thank you.
That's easy.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
Thank you for everything that you do. It matters. It's important.
Appreciate it.
I read where this all started by a gentleman in Maine who did this. This was his business with-
Absolutely.
-Christmas trees and wreaths, and he had some excess one year.
Right. So Worcester Wreath Company in Columbia Falls, Maine, is an actual commercial wreath company. In 2003, they had excess wreaths that they didn't sell. They took those to Arlington and placed them in Arlington. That was the first year. A photo was taken, it went viral on Facebook a year later, and then what we know of as Rees Across America today began in 2007. They were incorporated, and it came to New Bern in 2010.
Do we have any idea how many wreaths?
Last year, it was over 4 million.
Over 4 million?
Total.
That's phenomenal.
And those are all sponsored and, you know, community, public source funds to pay for that.
Well, if anyone would like to, I know that the organization would covet your funds, because this is not a cheap ordeal, and it's, as you said, a volunteer, group of volunteers for the most part to do this. So I know, I believe last year, they had a booth set up in front of Mitchell's Hardware one day-
We do.
-where people asking for donations. So if you can, that would be a great way to make a donation, and it's tax deductible.
Absolutely, it is.
I would encourage that.
Yes, sir.
I saw that you guys worked with a lot of student groups. If I had to, student groups that wanted to get involved, was the best way to do that?
Absolutely. Reach out to me directly. Shameless plug to our Facebook page, Rees Across America New Bern is probably the easiest way, or newbernreese@gmail.com, and reach out to me, and absolutely, we have the ROTC, we have the New Bern High School Band, we have young Marines that come out, all kinds of different organizations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we certainly appreciate what you do.
Awesome.
Your volunteer, spent your time and obviously, a lot of effort to get this put together, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number five, Craven County Courthouse Governor's Boulder Edition. Shane Diggin. Shane?
Hello, Board. Thanks for letting me speak today. So as you may know, we have a boulder in front of the courthouse that has three governors on it, Richard Dobbs Spate and his son, Richard Dobbs Spate Jr., as well as Abner Nash. So three of the four sides are used to honor former governors. Today, I'm bringing up Sims Waite and Susan Lucas from the Daughters of the American Revolution, Richard Dobbs Spate Chapter, local here in New Bern, and they have a request they would like to make of you. So if you want to, please stand up.
Thank you for inviting us here today. We really appreciate the opportunity. I'm Susan Lucas, Ms. Sims Waite, and we would like to tell you about a project that we're working on, which is a commemoration of Bev Perdue's service as the first female governor of North Carolina. Sims will tell you more about that. I'll tell you more about our organization. Nationally, Daughters of the American Revolution was founded in 1890, and our chapter was founded in 1921. Our core values are historic preservation, education, and patriotism, and we work closely with the Palace and the Sons of the American Revolution. We are non-political and philanthropic. I could give you some examples of some of the work that we do, and it's all volunteer. We support Constitution Week by providing information to the community and schools about the Constitution. As a aside, one of New Bern's citizens, Gertrude Spade Caraway, was instrumental in getting the week started on the national level with President Eisenhower. We support the celebration of the anniversary of the New Bern Resolves by providing education and a free public event. We provide scholarships for GED students and high school seniors, and these are just a few of the ways we serve Craven County. Last year, we put in over 8,000 volunteer hours. At the government rate of $31 an hour, that comes to $248,000 that benefited Craven County. So you can see we have an important economic impact. Now, the project that Sims will talk about is both commemorative and educational. Sims?
In 1923, Richard Dobbs Spate Chapter dedicated the Mountain Area Granite Boulder that's now on the courthouse grounds. In your folder, when you go home tonight, I have an article from the 1923 event for you to look at. The, as you heard before, the boulder only has three sides currently with plaques on it. On the fourth side, which is now where the new walkway is, is blank, and we would like to add the next governor from Craven County, Bev Perdue, onto it. This will be at no cost to the county, and I want to emphasize that. This is our gift to the public, because we want to recognize women in American history. We want to recognize the great people of Craven County. Are there any questions?
I do have one question, and that is, if we approve that tonight, when would that be done?
We, so what we're requesting tonight is a letter from y'all acknowledging that you are okay with putting another plaque on the boulder. We will be sending that as a package up to the National Society of Daughters of American Revolution in DC. We figure it'll at least take six months for them to approve it. And then from there, once it's been approved, we'll get the company to come in, they're going to shave the backside of the plaque. The plaque that we are going to order is not going to be as big as the ones that are there now, because we would like to leave room for the next governor from Craven County. So it'll be a slightly smaller plaque, and it'll be a little bit more modern looking. So it's part of our America 250 calendar for yet, next year, so we're hoping from the summer on that something will happen.
Sometime next year.
Yes.
Okay. What are the questions?
So that, so currently, when Bev Perdue is added, all governors from Craven County would be represented on the-
Yes.
-on the plaque. I'd like to thank you guys for what you do, and I had your Constitution Week poster on my door the last few weeks, and we had some kids participate, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ladies, have any questions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. We'll let you know when the dedication is.
That was simple.
Yes.
Okay. We'll get you a letter. Okay. Number six, under Departmental Matters. First item is Kate Fersinger, Housing Resolution Consultant. I think we heard from her earlier. Kate?
I forgot I was coming back up here. I was just enjoying. Yes, so we have a resolution allowing the county to submit an application to the state. The agency at the state is the Rural Economic Development District from the Department of Commerce, so we would like to pass a resolution allowing for Craven County to, or authorizing Craven County to submit the application.
Kate, do I have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Motion passes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number B. Subdivision for approval, Antioch Farm LLC, final approval. Commissioners, I have a, I'm one of the owners of this subdivision, so I am asking to be recused on this vote.
I've heard the request of Chairman Booker. Do I have a motion and a second that we recuse him from voting and ask him, if you would, to leave the room?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I take it as a motion and a second, and discussion on the motion. Here none of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Call for you in just a minute, sir. All right, Ms. Chad.
All right, sir. The planning board met on September 25th of this year and recommended the following subdivision for approval, Antioch Farm LLC, final. The property is owned by Antioch Farm LLC, and it was surveyed by Willer Land Surveying. It's located in Township 2, off of Antioch Road. The subdivision contains four lots on 2.69 acres. The lots will be served by First Craven Water and Individual Septic Systems, and there will be a new road that will go on official record in the codified ordinance for the county, and that is Antioch Farms Drive. And we have a map here just showing it's approximately halfway down Antioch Road on the loop by US 17. Next slide, please. And this is just the aerial of where the subdivision is located. Next slide. And this is the subdivision plan. As you can see, the four lots there serve by a private street. There'll be private road disclosures for this road. My understanding, there is no requirement from the county for it to be improved to any standard, but it's going to be a gravel drive that will serve these four lots. So this map is in order for approval and recommended from the planning board.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard what you're saying, but I'm not quite sure. Now, will this road meet state standards if it comes to?
Yep. So if there's four lots or less, it can be a private road.
Uh-huh. I heard that.
And the only thing it has to meet is the right-of-way, the 50-foot right-of-way, but the road does not have to be constructed to any standard.
Oh, I know, but is this going to be?
This will be constructed to private road standards, which, from the owner, what they have disclosed to me, that it's going to be a gravel, 16-foot wide gravel access drive.
Why would the state standards have to be?
On a state road, traditionally, it's about 18 feet wide. Yes, ma'am. But the right-of-way is the same, 50 foot. We require that for future access.
Okay. Other questions for Commissioners? Chad, will the ownership of the road, will it go to all the, whoever buys those lots, they will own the road to all four of them?
Like a shared equal access.
So they would all be responsible for upkeep of the road?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Other questions from Commissioners? Just so we, you know, just so the citizens know, we don't want nobody to think that it has been disclosed, Chairman Booker is one owner of this, that anything that's been done, you know, for him, that it wouldn't be done for somebody else. He's followed all the processes, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And met the standard, and it is recommended by the planning board that it be approved, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions from Commissioners? If not, do we have a motion that we would approve the subdivision for Antioch Farm? We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, and discussion on the motion. I am going to ask for, yes, ma'am.
I cannot approve it, because I have seen roads that did not meet the standards, and later on, they've become a problem, so I'm sorry, I can't, I cannot vote for that.
You have been consistent on that, Commissioner Smith, and we respect that. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you if you would call a roll.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, motion passed. All right, Chairman Booker is, invite him back in. Madam Clerk, if you would, let the minutes show that Chairman Booker has come back in at eight minutes to seven. All right, Ms. Chairman, turn it back over to you.
Okay. It's like item number seven, water replacement vehicle for the Water Department, Mr. Hodges.
So, good evening, Board. The request tonight is for a budget amendment for a replacement vehicle for the Water Department. Due to some unanticipated maintenance, the Water Department is currently down a vehicle. It's originally believed that a spare vehicle that they had could be utilized until the next fiscal year. However, it's been deemed that it is unsafe to travel due to the rural nature of where these vehicles has to go and the roads it has to traverse and going into all the different well sites, et cetera. So as a result, a new vehicle is needed because what had happened is they moved vehicles they had around, so now we're short one, so we actually need one for the Water Services Director. The amount of this includes the purchase of a GMC Terrain along with safety lighting and installation, all the applicable tags, and the AIM fueling system installation on this vehicle. Total amount of the request is $33,787. This is in the Water Fund, so it will be coming from the Water Fund fund balance.
Okay. So the Board is being asked to approve a budget amendment in the amount of 33787. Madam Clerk, we've got to have a motion first.
I would make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you. Item eight is appointments. Let me read the pending appointments. The Craven Aging Planning Board, Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, Craven County Highway 70 Corridor Committee, Craven County Planning Board, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and Volunteer Agricultural Districts 1 and 6. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Lauren Tucker resigned as of 9/23/2025. Indicated a trillium staff member will temporarily attend the meetings in the interim of a replacement being appointed, and her resignation is attached. Havoc Board of Adjustment, Jacqueline Palmer resigned as of 8/28, and would like to continue to serve until a replacement has been appointed, and her resignation is also here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have, Commissioners should have at their desk, Ms. Brenda Lathan-House sent in a request to be appointed to Volunteer Agriculture District, representing District 1, and I would ask the Board if you would consider that. I'd like to nominate her for that position.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for District 1 Volunteer Agricultural District? Hearing none, she will be appointed by acclamation.
Thank you, sir.
Under current Clean Sweep Committee, Cindy Teasdale would like to be reappointed.
I would make that nomination, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Teasdale has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, she will be appointed by acclamation. Under Craven County Planning Board, Nadia Anderson seeks reappointment. Do I hear a nomination for her? That's District 1.
I'll make that nomination.
Okay. Are there any others for that spot?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Timothy Colletoni to fill that expired term.
So we have two. If I understand that correctly, we have Nadia Anderson seeking reappointment. I'm confused on this because it says she seeks reappointment, then it says to fill the expired term.
Her term has expired.
Her actual term expired.
Okay.
She would, if reappointed, serve, but Mr. Colletoni has also put an application of his interest to serve.
Okay.
I will throw by nomination.
Okay. All right, so Timothy Colletoni has been nominated to fill that expired term. Are there any others? Hearing none, he will be appointed by acclamation. Recreational Advisory Council, the Board has requested to table the following appointments till November 3rd. That council is scheduled to meet on October 20 and having discussions on aligning with the 12-year term limitations set forth in the county's rules procedure. We have a 12-year term maximum. That's the most anybody can serve on any board. Apparently, this organization had a six-year maximum, two three-year terms. So they're going to discuss realigning, so we're going to hold off on that one. And then last one, under Jury Commission, Timothy Mason seeks reappointment. Do I have here a nomination for Mr. Mason?
I'll nominate him.
Okay, Mr. Mason has been nominated. Are there any others? Hearing none, he will be approved by acclamation. And upcoming, we have the Fire Tax Commissioners Board, Charles Dudley, Township 5 Harlow Fire. Okay, that should take care of our appointments. Next, we have a very long County Attorney's Report. Well, maybe not too long.
I'll go as fast as I can, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
I do have five items for you this evening, all involve the proposed sale of county-owned surplus real estate. All five parcels are jointly owned with the city of New Bern, so in the interest of efficiency, I'll just let you know the city's done what it needs to do with each of the five parcels insofar as approval. The first parcel was located at 2204 Hartford Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8039086. The initial offer amount was $2,500. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were $4,048.43, and the tax value of the property is $5,000. If the Board will give initial approval to this, we'll get it out for the upset bid process, and I do suggest that the Board move forward with giving it initial approval.
Okay. So we're asked to adopt the resolution approving the initial offer to purchase real property and authorize the upset bid process for parcel number 8-039086. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. The second parcel was also an initial offer to purchase for property located at 827 Bloomfield Street, also within the city of New Bern, with a parcel ID number of 8007128. The initial offer amount is $3,000. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $2,764.82, and the tax value of this parcel was $6,000. As with the first parcel, I would suggest the Board give its initial approval so we can get it out for upset bids.
Okay. Board, we were asked to approve a resolution approving the initial offer to purchase real property and authorize the upset bid process for parcel number 8007128. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The third parcel is for property located at 323 Liberty Street, also within the city of New Bern, with a parcel ID number of 8009070. This is a final approval after the expiration of the upset bid process. We had an initial bid of $1,380, but during the upset bid process, we had multiple upset bids, and the last and highest bidder was at the amount of $6,161. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were $3,055.86, and the tax value of this parcel is $2,760. I would recommend that the Board give this its final approval so we can get this parcel back on the tax rolls.
To approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second, to approve the resolution approving the conveyance after expiration of upset bid. Parcel 8009070, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The fourth item is for property located at 1002 Sampson Street, also in the city of New Bern, with a parcel ID number of 8006211. This is a final approval after the expiration of the upset bid process. The initial and high bid was $2,700. The original taxes, past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were $3,075.69, and the tax value on this parcel was $5,400. As with the others, I would suggest the Board consider giving this its final approval so we can get this parcel back on the tax rolls.
Okay, Board, we're asked to approve a resolution of any conveyance after expiration of upset bid for parcel 8006211. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
And the fifth and final item, Commissioners, is for property located at 605 Second Avenue, again, within the city of New Bern, with a parcel ID number of 8021153. The amount of the bid is $2,700. The offer was advertised, and we did receive an upset bid on this one in the amount of $5,037.50, which became the high bid. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were $3,948.79, and the tax value is $5,400. As with the others, I would suggest the Board give its final approval so we can get this parcel back on the tax rolls.
Okay, Board, we're asked to approve a resolution approving conveyance after expiration of upset bid period for parcel 8021153. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
That concludes my report, and that was as fast as I could go.
You did good.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You did good.
Speed reading.
Okay, item number 10, petitions of citizens. Mr. Vice Chair, are there any citizens that we wish to speak?
Ms. Chairman, we have two. The first one is Mr. David French.
French, as before, give your name and address, please.
Yes, and I would ask if you would please grant me one extra minute.
Three minutes? Talk faster.
Okay. I'm David French at 104 Johnson Street, New Bern. Last month marked seven very long years since Hurricane Florence hit our beloved New Bern and ENC. My dear cousin Mary Ann, a stroke survivor, and I rode out the hurricane in her walk-up attic as the floodwaters engulfed and rushed into her home. There are thousands of us here in ENC who are still not back home due to the absolute failure of governors Roy Cooper, Josh Stein, and their cohorts, Eddie Buffalo, Laura Hogstedt, Matthew Arlen, Prior Gibson, Michael Cullen, and others for not properly administering an INCOR Rebuild NC HUD program. In 2019, FEMA said they were going to repair Cousin Mary Ann's home. They lied. In 2020, we entered the rebuild program, which was funded with almost $1 billion in federal taxpayer HUD funds. In 2022, with no real progress from Rebuild NC, we went to our elected officials and reported Lisa Sword, who exposed the Rebuild NC corruption and mismanagement. In September 2022, the first North Carolina hurricane was held, but they have failed to hold hearings every three months as promised. In October 2022, my dear cousin Mary Ann passed away. The effects of moving three times in her 80s and not being back in her beloved home took its toll on her. We have only made it through all this with the help of the good Lord, our family, and friends. In May 2023, I signed an agreement with Rebuild NC to build a home to replace Cousin Mary Ann's. They were told repeatedly since 2020 that the home was in the New Bern Historic District and that it must adhere to all local, state, and federal guidelines. They said it would. They lied. In November 2024, Rebuild NC tried to kick me out of the program because I went to my elected officials and I gave a front-page interview to Luciana at the News &amp; Observer about the failure of Rebuild NC, which led them to being exposed, trying to hide an almost quarter of a billion-dollar program deficit. In February 2025, Rebuild NC illegally and fraudulently kicked me out of the program, stopping all storage and stipend taxpayer payments, which they were obligated to supply me until I'm back in my home. I would have never needed one cent of this had they done their jobs properly years ago. I appealed, and they have never responded, which they are legally required to do. Over the past almost eight months, there have been talks between the city of New Bern, Craven County, and/or Rebuild NC about transferring my home project and others for Craven County to do the work, but Rebuild NC has failed to do their part. Craven County has over 40 years of success in elevating and repairing store and damaged homes. Since November 2024, I have tried to work with Representative Tyson, who was great after Hurricane Florence, and Senator Brinson, but now they are unwilling to truly fight for me and the thousands of ENC people who are still suffering. They both have excluded me from Rebuild NC meetings about my life and my home. Two months ago in Raleigh, I finally had a meeting with Rebuild NC, Tyson, Brinson, and others after five years. I have repeatedly asked for an update and another meeting with no direct response from any of them. This is unacceptable and unprofessional. We, the hurricane flood survivors, have no one representing us. NC State Auditor David Ballack is conducting an investigation of Rebuild NC and a specific investigation in my case and others. There is also a federal HUD investigation of Rebuild NC. Listen, I am facing losing my uninhabitable flooded home, my temporary apartment, and my storage due to the failure of Rebuild NC and my elected officials to act responsibly and properly. They do not care. In 2018, President Trump walked right in front of our home with New Bern native Linda McManahan. Like President Trump told the LA Fire survivors, their home should be built back bigger, better, and more beautiful. I think he would say the same for those of us here in ENC and WNC. I have repeatedly asked Tyson, Brinson, Murphy, Tillis, and Bud to please contact President Trump and HUD Secretary Turner to step in and fix the Rebuild NC debacle and to prevent the same thing happening in WNC. They have not done so. Why? Listen, this is important.
Mr. French, your time is up.
The Hurricane Florence flood survivors of Craven County have been defrauded by the state of North Carolina under Cooper, Stein, and Rebuild and their bureaucratic thugs. We need Craven County and its cities and towns to band together to represent our interests to get us back home. We are tired of leaving out of bags and boxes. We just want to go home. My daily prayers are for us here in ENC and those in WNC who are suffering under a tyrannical North Carolina state government. I will not yield. Y'all must do something.
Ms. Chairman, our next citizen to speak is Mr. Ray Griffin.
Mr. Griffin.
I know the routine.
You know the routine.
God bless you. We love you. Coming to you once again. The great restraint against evil toward others is the knowledge that every person in the nation will one day give an account for their actions to Almighty God. The Bible tells us that we are responsible for our actions, and we must be accountable for what we do or we don't do. It also teaches that there is a penalty for doing wrong and a blessing when we do something right and other than just. As Americans, we were born in a land of freedom to live in a nation founded as one nation under God. As true Americans, we know the power and the purpose of prayer. From our nation beginning through the times before of tragedy, we have been called to pray that the hands of Almighty God might show forth His mercy and intervene with His grace towards America. Today's no different. Second Chronicles 7:14 simply says, "If my people are called by my name and humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I heal from heaven and forgive their sins and heal the land." From the local government to the halls of government to the White House, we must put God first. At Museum of the Bible in Washington, DC, there was a walkthrough that were given, all types of descriptions of Bibles and any national Bibles and different things. They talked about civil war, slavery, and the Holocaust. But at the end of that meeting in Washington, DC, the gentleman stood up and said, "In the name of Jesus, we pray." Now, if they can do that as the nation coming out of Washington, DC in public broadcast, why can we not do it here? Why is there a lawsuit pending when they do it nationally and it's broadcasted all throughout the United States? There's something going on here that some people are not telling. I don't even know. It may just be a threat. I don't even know, it may just be a threat that you're not being able to do anything. How can you discriminate against the county when they do it all the time? Why aren't they there discriminating against those people in Washington DC? They do it freely, it's in the name of Jesus. But yet here you're saying we cannot say in the name of Jesus. And besides, you read a prayer from the county that's already been read. And if you don't say the name of Jesus, it bounces off the wall, it goes nowhere. We got to say a name and direction to someone. Every time you step out in obedience, every time you choose faith over fear, you are showing God's grace in a way that transforms lives. And that's what it's supposed to be all about. We are given things that we need to be doing. We need to get on our knees and be praying and with our hearts and our prayer in the name of Jesus and ask Him to make this nation once again the great nation that it was many years ago. And the Bible says the only way we can make it through heaven is through the Son to go to the Father. So I ask you tonight to think about what you're doing. Evidently, I think discrimination. If one can get away with it and do it on a national level, why can't we do it? There's something I'm missing, I don't understand why they can do it and we can't do it. Why is there a lawsuit? Is there even a lawsuit? Or is it, are y'all just scared to stand up? Y'all may be just scared to really get back and stand up for the word of God and the truth.
Okay, we got your message.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, item number 11, county managers' report, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I got a little occupied earlier and I forgot to actually ask you to approve the resolution for Commissioner Mark. So if you, I would ask that at this time. I'm sorry, that was all me.
Okay, no problem. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
unanimous.
It did allow me to watch the video and I could see my hair vanishing before my eyes. So, but I had a lot of good memories of Commissioner Mark Lorraine. It was great to, great to see those.
It was neat to see those.
I didn't realize how much Tom and I had traveled together over the last 16 years. Anyway. All right, I have before you a couple items tonight. One, last week, we were made aware of some information from North Carolina Department of Transportation dealing with the ferry system. There were multiple calls last week and some correspondence we received. Of course, we'll share that with the board. But to kind of give you a synopsis, the ferry system is dealing with some significant revenue issues at the moment. They are looking at all ways to get through the year. Right now, that doesn't look very positive. What was most disturbing to me in some information they shared, I believe it was last Thursday, is they have a proposal, which would happen later this month, to reduce the ferry departures from Cherry Branch to Minnesot Beach by 43%. Or, let me just equate that, that is 24 departures or 43% reduction. I have a list here, of course, I'll share with you. That ferry currently crosses every 20 minutes. It's not exact science on where they cut them, but there are some times as I look and I think about it, and I talked to our legislators on Friday about this. What, there's a misconception amongst the ferry system that this ferry happens to be related to tourism. Well, it is to some degree, right? I mean, there may be a tourist that wants to go check out Pamlico County. This is a workforce development, this is an economic development, this is national security, this is educational. And I think we're missing that point on this ferry. There are buses that leave Craven County with schoolchildren that go across that river and back. When I look at the schedule, no crossing at 3, no crossing at 3:30, no crossing at 4. So I'm trying to do the math in my head on how that would work, and I don't have it. So in speaking with the legislators last week, their suggestion would be for us to adopt a letter to both the House and Senate leadership, along with the Secretary of Transportation, who's brand new, by the way, like a couple weeks it's been installed, and ask for further study on this issue before any decisions are made. And to hear the voices of not only Craven County, but all of eastern North Carolina that's affected by this. I know that when I spoke with Representative Tyson, he was very supportive of the ferry system and the things that need to be done. But that was a suggestion. I would recommend as well, we consider a resolution in the future, not only about this, but the importance of the ferry system as a whole. It feels like every year, there's some self-generated crisis here that happens and we're doing some type of letter or resolution. But maybe talk about really what the ferry means to us. So I'll, I'll put that out there.
Board, everybody in agreement that we need to start with getting the letter together?
Okay.
Not only am I in agreement, but I'm out there on the reg, on a regular basis. I don't see when that ferry is a full or nearly full. So I don't know how we can manage that. And also, the times that they're saying that's when the base lets out for their normal workday is between 3:00 and 4:00 PM. So there needs to be a lot more to look into this. Any cuts? It needs to be taken very seriously.
Well, I do know there are a substantial number of people that use that ferry for back and forth of work.
Sure. It goes both ways. People come to Cherry Point, people go to PCS, I mean, it's definitely both ways.
So would you put a letter together?
Yes, sir.
And we'll get that off?
Happy to do that. And I will mention, there are conversations happening between the different counties. I have let our folks know that work for the county in Raleigh about this issue. I know others are doing that as well, particularly Pamlico County and Hyde County, who I've been communicating with. All counties are concerned, and I don't want to, I don't want to just talk about Craven. There are all the ferry routes experiencing somewhere between a 33 and, well, one of them's 100%, but that's a seasonal ferry. But 100, a 33% to 60% reduction in ferry routes throughout the remainder of the year.
I have a hard time in my head figuring out, yeah, there's some fuel savings.
Right.
What else?
Wear and tear on the boat and labor, so only three, well, three costs along with fuels. Anyway, all right, we will get that letter drafted. The other thing I wanted to mention, I believe it was last week, there was notification in the most recent mini-budget funding bill that came out of Raleigh. There was 10.4 million allocated for the airport. This is a big deal. It will allow us to open up roughly 90 acres, which we'd already been working on infrastructure, but allow us to have that not only for aerospace economic development, but also being there for national security and partnering with the military and giving options out there. It's a big deal. I don't know that it's gotten the, the press that it probably deserves, but this 10.4 million will go a long way. And of course, in working as the county does with private partnerships, we've already had significant interest in developing facilities there that will bring more jobs into Craven County, more use to the airport. So I just wanted to make sure we mentioned that. So, Mr. Chairman, that was my, my report, unless the board has anything for me.
Do you want to have any questions for the chairman?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 12 is Commissioners Reports. Mr. Howard, Commissioner Howard, would you like to go first?
Um, I have no report.
Okay, ladies. Commissioner Smith.
I do have something that I feel is, is noteworthy. I hope it doesn't bore you too much. Well, East Carolina Workforce Development Board, the consortium. I attended the meeting last week and Bill Green, who is director of that program, has been asked to cut back 20% and has managed to do so, that he thinks, without, without losing any programs. He's cutting back in the management and other part of the program, but he's not cutting back in service. And I'm just astounded and I'm very delighted that we still will have the same programs that we have, the same offerings for the citizens of Craven County, although it's, we're cutting back on, on those resources. The other thing that I'd like to mention is that also last week, I attended the reopening of the senior building down the street on George Street. And I was very pleased. I think it went very well. There were county people there, we were there, and many citizens. And while I'm so impressed, the building is now designed so that it, it is effective for programs that they need to have. And that is great, the building is beautiful. And the programs are, the building is designed now to, to serve the people. But what I'm most impressed about is, I had a little conversation with several of the, of the citizens, and they are so happy, they feel like they're part of, they are so pleased with the people who work there. And I'm happy that Ms. Anderson Brown, Andrews Brown, has built relationships so that the citizens feel like this is home. And they are proud of the building, they're proud of what they're doing, and they're looking forward to increasing and continuing these programs. So that's a good thing.
Very good.
So October is one of my favorite months in Craven County because we do have a festival every weekend to attend that we can get in our car and be there within 30, 40 minutes. Of course, this coming weekend's Mum Fest, but I'd like to remind everybody about the Havlock Chili Festival. The Havlock Chili Festival has a whole different ambiance to it because it's a small-town USA festival, right? It's chilly, it's the perfect time of year. But most importantly, I want to give kudos to those that put this on because all of the profits from that chili festival go to local nonprofits. And so without the work that they do, our local nonprofits would struggle a lot more than they do. So I want to thank everybody that's working hard for the Havlock Chili Festival. I would encourage everyone to attend and vote for the Harlow Volunteer Firefighters Chili to win. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to take away from you, but I saw Don Baumgardner back there. And you've seen him here all for years and years, 40-plus years of service to Craven County, and just think he ought to be sitting there at every, every meeting. But Don, good to see you back, buddy.
Yeah, you don't look like a day older. I don't feel you.
I would just like to add to what Mrs. Smith said, and that is the, the beautiful job that Mr. Gene and his folks did getting that senior center, that old raggedy building looking like a new building. So, good job. And by the way, one thing I learned at that ribbon cutting, and that is that that property has been many, many, many things over the years. A racetrack, but my favorite thing, that property was a zoo. The New Bern Zoo used to be right up the road here where the senior center is. And I think around World War II, they closed the zoo. So I didn't know we had a zoo. Yeah, you learn something all the time. Anybody have anything else to add? Okay, we are being asked to go into closed session. The board will be requested to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A5. Property acquisition and NCGS 143-318-11A3. Attorney-client privilege to discuss existing litigation in the matter of Craven County and William C. and Margaret P. Butler. So do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will go into closed session. Take a five-minute recess before we do that.